I keep looking at that call.
You know, me too.
Town of Vilehaven Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on September 12th to 2023 at 5:00 p.m. At the Vilehaven Town Office located at 19 Washington School Road to hear public comment on the following. Number one, proposed general assistance ordinance and appendices A through H. The complete document is available for you at the town office.
This piece is in your regular packet?
Yes. Thank you. You guys all looked up and looked at it online. I know it's hard to read that online. It was especially so small. And lots of this. Tore the back of it. There is so damn big. So. Do we have? There it is. Do we have any comments? From the audience or? Numbers? I didn't have any questions. General assistance. On the general assistance ordinance.
It's the same thing as every year, right?
Won't change much. Okay, so we will close this meeting out.
No, it's because here.
I'm sorry. No, I'm going to close the hearing. Cut this hearing out and go to number two. Is that okay?
It's okay.
Okay, thank you. Number two, winter maintenance road closures. Post-winter closings of specified roads or portions thereof. A George Wright Road, B Hopkins Point Road, C Mills Farm Road, D Minerva Lane, E Ames Cove Road from the Philbrook property to Richard's property, F Shore Acres Road from the beginning of the paved hill to Terminus, G Tiptoe Mountain Road from the beginning of the Tiptoe Mountain Parking Area to Terminus, H Walls Road, I Young Road from Gross's property to Terminus, and J Zeke's Point beginning of Swimming Pool Hill. Comments? Dan?
Zeke's Point Hill, we fought over it three years ago. We got people over there with the land systems. If there's a regular land, you can usually tell them what's going off inside the house. If this is a fire alarm, by the time it's got to be called, they've got to get there. They've got to go pay it.
Water insurance required. I know we went through this. Several years ago. The same discussion, yes.
Yeah, I would recommend that you take that off the list.
You want to take it off, did you say?
Take it off the list. I still have the records from when this went to the county commissioners back in 2015, November of 2015. So I think the same thing would probably happen.
Just for all of them or just that one?
Just Jay Zeke's Point. And I remember that meeting that we had when you mentioned that.
Is this something we do every year? And I'm assuming then in that case that there's a fire or something like that, that the town's fires would be the front of the fire department.
Well, they they're going to have to take care of it. Ben?
Hopkins Point Road, I know there's construction going on there this winter.
Is that?
Salt stalls up there.
That's to the end, right? I mean, there again, there. Care takers down in there, people working, I don't know.
That'll help your room stop people working.
I mean, if we decide to close it, then people just come back and we'll have to go through the same process, so. The only one I know that is really causes a lot of problems is that swimming pool hill, and there's nothing you can do about it. I mean, every, every winter, there's something going on up there.
Usually there's some help which takes it off the town trucks, please.
Oh. Used to be.
I thought we did that, but I don't, I don't know what's happening now.
I thought we were told by a previous administrator that we weren't allowed to do that.
Well, what we used to do is just pay, pay them as an employee and then pay, pay for their truck to kind of get around the contractor issue. I don't know. I'd have to look into it again.
Yeah, I mean, that would seem like the most plausible thing to do to me would be hire somebody with a heavy-duty plow truck instead of sending the town trucks up there. I don't, I just know that we were told that.
I know the driveway from the top of Swimming Pool Hill has to be plowed.
What's that, Dan?
Say that driveway from top of Swimming Pool Hill has to be plowed for access down to the house because of the land system.
Right.
I know there's two, there's two systems beyond that.
We used the guy with the heavy-duty plow truck, his contract. He's had to get a damn price out of it. He sort of judges it by his stone. But he's going to be going up there and do that. I don't know if he'd be wanting to do the whole thing. I'm sure he would. But I know it's going to be some type of benefit of the town stuff with this government law, but.
Well, I don't know, Magic. I guess you'd have, you'll have to look into that and see what Dan was just saying.
I thought we decided to take that off Zeke's point.
Well, she should have taken it off the list, but then she brought it back up.
No, 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 no. My point is, we're talking about having a subcontract of somebody that's not, yes, I'm not talking about taking it, putting it back onto the road closure. I was talking about somebody else plowing beside the town trucks. Right? Yes.
And that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, no, I'm agreeing.
Talking about the same thing.
I'm agreeing. I'm agreeing with you. I'm trying to tell Marjorie what we were talking about. So I don't, I just thought that we weren't allowed to do that. That's what we were told.
Previously.
Yeah.
No, I know when I was a board member, it was just subcontract, a lot of that stuff.
It would seem like the most logical thing.
Yeah, it seemed.
So what about Hopkins Point? There is construction going to be going on.
If they, if we can do the same thing, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to do that, hire it out, subcontract it.
No, well, what we're talking about now is whether the town is, is going to plow it, so.
Right, but we have to decide. I think we have to find out if we can hire subcontractors to do the plowing instead of sending the trucks, the big plow trucks up there, then I would think we would.
Some of the contractors, like your cousin, actually do their own plowing for the going in and out of the project.
I assume they do.
Yeah.
On town roads, it's not.
Not, 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 not.
You're not supposed to do it.
Okay.
That's what, that's my point of this whole conversation.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's.
But if we have, if we contracted them, that liability would be gone.
Yeah, as long as they're on under the auspices of the town, right?
Have to be insured.
Yeah.
So as long as they're. Yes, so. Any other?
Yes or no on Hopkins Point?
I assume it would, it's a yes, we leave it on there so that it can be plowed by, I mean, to take it off the list.
So it can be subcontracted.
Right. Like we're taking C B.
Probably could be plowed by the town road. I mean, town road, it's flat. It has to be a small.
Yeah, that, that one would be. That one would be fine to just do with a regular plow truck if, if it's a rigamarole.
I mean, I don't know how far down they go, so.
So there's construction out there right now?
At the end of the road, they didn't build an house. Yes, they built in the house.
What, down into?
Okay.
Down below the level.
Salt stalls, yeah.
Way at the end.
So you think we should remove B and J from this list?
Yeah.
It's B.
Where does the town road end there? I don't actually know. Does it end right where they all branch off?
I think, I think when the Terrans.
Oh, I have the type though.
Going, I think on Terrans, it becomes private.
Is it?
Right.
What's that, Jess? It is on your list. It's the Terrans. At the corner.
I think up there becomes, well, not possible, but it goes down to a dirt. I don't know where the fight begins.
Well, if that's the case, just don't plow snowbank up on that corner. You've got it, it's on them anyways.
Yeah, well, it depends on where the town road actually ends. Marjorie, you probably can look that up.
Yeah, I can look it up. But we're taking it off the closing list. Is that correct?
Take this on the open list, tell it to someone's town road.
That's what, yeah, that's.
Yes, well, clearly.
Otherwise, we'll have to get on the list.
Yeah, I have a question about Young's. Young's Point Road.
Young Road.
From the grosses up. Last year, Millie had a hard time plowing there because they kept their cars there.
Plowing past it.
Fun?
Plowing past it. Well, well, she wanted to plow past it, but this is saying close it after, so she wouldn't be plowing there anyway. But this, they've asked for that road to be made private to the stone house.
They're new on this now.
So.
Yes.
So they don't, we wouldn't be going that far anyway.
Yeah. No, I'm just making a point because last year it became a problem.
And Millie can't be here tonight because she was at the school. Teacher parent, then was at five, was at five thirty.
No, so, no, I don't have, I can make them.
So, okay. Does anybody else have any other suggestions?
I can make them from here.
Okay, same. So how are we gonna? It's still gonna have to plow to the grosses. Right?
Yes. It would be after that. Still would have to stop, yeah. Am I missing one? You're missing walls.
Walls. Any other questions or suggestions?
So I am just.
Fifty years of war.
I'm going.
What's up?
Just going to find where I saved.
But we have each, each road gets a closer.
But this should just say from Gross's property to Terminus. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have lifted it. It just says Young Road.
So is that, is it going to have to be just end at Gross's property?
Yeah, it's got it, the order of closing has to state the specific portion of the road. I mean, this just says Tiptoe Mountain Mode, and this one says Young Road. It's not the whole road, it's just.
It says on our thing, it says, it says it's from beginning of Tiptoe Mountain Parking Area to Terminus.
No, I mean, the order of closing that you have to sign.
I see, okay.
Excellent.
Maybe we could prepare these and have them come in? Okay, all right.
That's all right. You can do it later because we'll have to come in and sign.
Yeah.
Anyways.
Magic, can you just put, just attach this to it and refer to it?
Attach.
Attach the description.
Well, it's all spelled out.
To the signature page.
We can just sign it when we come in to sign the next warrant, can't we?
Yeah, yeah. That way they can give them time to get it organized. Lizzy can find the, find the.
Where I saved it.
In between, how far do you have to go on that Hopkins Point Road?
Before it turns private. Yeah, I don't know. But, yeah, they can. I have not been down in there for a long time.
Because I wouldn't think it would go all the way to the end. It becomes very much just a driveway.
Yeah. Down to Ambrose out through there, right? Yeah. I mean, it's hard enough to turn around there anyway, on a good day.
Yeah, this is just the public hearing portion.
Okay, so does anybody have any other comments to make? All right, so I will close this public hearing.
All right.
Do I have to have to make a motion or just say?
Okay.
Already.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I'll call this Town of Vilehaven Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. Roll call. It was looking like, am I going to call it Vlad Olson? Dawn Young, Leslie Dyer, Pam Alley. Tom Anthony is absent. Deputy Town Clerk Elizabeth Bunker and Town Manager Marjorie Stratton. To approve agenda.
So moved.
Uh, you have one addition.
Okay.
One addition. Uh, eight C, old business. You have the main state ferry service advisory board letter.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you.
See, I'm glad I wrote that to you because I forgot.
It came Marjorie's email.
We got it Monday.
Oh, good, okay. So moved as amended.
Second.
All in favor? Number three minutes, prove the minutes from the August 22nd, 2023 meeting. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Number four, proven sign treacherous warrant, number 11, so moved.
Definitely.
All in favor? Five, communications.
I just had this, uh, letter from State of Maine Department of Agriculture and Conservation Forestry. They always send a copy of any applications to the municipal officials. This is David Watson and Ann Breznerhan uh, applying to modify a ramp and float system and to add pilings on submerged lands and their property on Dogfish Island. So it's just a notice to the municipal official.
Number six, speakers from the floor. Number seven, committee and departmental reports and appointments. Number of A. It's not a number. What is current status report?
So they submitted a status report also. Brent will be out here not tomorrow, Thursday. Uh, I don't know if maybe Gabe would want to know what we're going to be doing on Thursday.
Yep, go ahead, Gabe.
Yeah, sure. Um, so we are going to start, or I say sort of continue gathering information from stakeholders um, around the two parking lot redesigns and improvements. So we plan to meet with any interested business and property owners. Um, downtown parking lot and then um, fish plant parking lot and also any fishermen, marine industry folks. Um, same thing, downtown parking lot and um, uh, fish plant parking lot. Um, so if there's any folks listening that are interested in either of those conversations, essentially Jim and Pete and Marjorie and Brent and I will be around um, just to talk about the things that Jim and Pete and the fishermen who've already weighed in have discussed already. Brent will bring some initial sketches based on those conversations um, around the improvements that have already been suggested. And then we'll start to gather additional feedback on, on what's been suggested so far. And again, we'll do that with business and property owners and fishermen and marine industry folks to start with. Um, so that information will just continue to inform sort of evolving designs um, for both parking lots and boat ramps. And if folks want those specific times, I will look them up and make sure I share that with you before, before I leave the meeting.
Okay.
Any questions about any anything on this, their status report or?
No, Gabe, just let me know what time that is on Thursday.
It's, um, so the downtown parking lot is 12 to 1:30. Uh, and the, uh, oh, I'm sorry, the 12 to 1:30 is for business and property owners. In other words, the Main Street businesses that want to talk to Gabe and I and Brent Bridges about what they would like to see there. And then from 1:30 to 2:30, uh, the downtown parking lot, this is for fishermen and marine industry folks. Pete Gasperini and Jim Knowlton will be there. Um, and we'd like, you know, as many fishermen or people that use the, those parking lots. And then from there, we're going to, are we going to walk down to the other? Yeah, we'll walk down to the Fish Plant Worf and do kind of the same thing. Walk around, what would you like to see?
Yes, so I think we're, I think, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
No, I was just thinking, so it'd be 2:30, 2:45, we'd be at the Fish Plant Parking Lot.
Correct, that's what this, yeah.
Okay. And we did also invite, um, we tried to think of community groups that use that parking lot. So like the Celebration Committee, um, you know, key members from that committee, just thinking 4th of July, um, thinking Rampage, you know, so how is that parking, the downtown parking lot used um, uh, by the community similarly, um, you know, reaching out to Greeta and the co-op and other folks that, that directly interact with the Fish Plant Parking Lot who are not fishermen as well, so. Uh, and we did also solicit just general comments at the set, uh, June 28th public meeting that we had at the school, just around asking those participating in that meeting um, to weigh in on key components and elements that they value in the parking lots existing and things that they would like to see moving forward.
And then Gabe, I don't know if you had anything else, just from your update from the downtown project or?
Yeah, sure. I mean, um, I'm not sure if folks have any, uh, questions for me based on the report that I submitted. I will say I feel good about where we're at in terms of, uh, being much closer than we were last month. We have all of the easements that we need now, which is huge. Um, many thanks, um, to everyone who participated in helping make that happen. And thanks to all the property owners for granting those easements. Um, and, uh, we just are waiting on two mortgage consent forms, which essentially are from, from lenders, banks that need to sign off on the easements. And the two that we're waiting on are just in transit. Uh, we know they're coming, they're just, they just haven't been received yet, so. Um, so we're very close to submitting, resubmitting the designs and all of the legal documentation. Um, hopefully by the end of next week is, is our goal, so. Um, that will put that out of our hands and into the review process by Economic Development Administration. They review the designs and all of the legal requirements to make sure that we've met uh, those requirements. And then once they sign off, we can put it out to bid, which is huge and a long time coming. And then in terms of the other two funding, um, entities, uh, we're still finalizing some information for our, um, environmental review or environmental recess assessment. That's through our Northern Borders Grant, and once we get that, we can send that to Northern Borders for review. And when we get the approval, um, that will, we have one more public notice period for the environmental review. And then once that, we get through that, then we can get our full notice to proceed, which means we can start charging off on that grant in terms of design. And the parking lot design, uh, components are all part of, part of that grant. And then we have the EPA grant, which we're, we're pretty much, you know, have submitted most of the application information for that. Um, we're just waiting on a couple of things that Woodard and Curran needs to, uh, decide on in terms of if we need to adjust the budget or the scope of work at all. And when I say adjust it, I don't mean change the total amount, I just mean reallocate as needed depending on what things are looking like. So we're, I think, I feel like we're in good shape, Marjorie. I mean, I don't know if you feel the same way after a long time of feeling like we're treading water.
I feel extremely.
Yeah, long, long, oh, getting those easily.
Seems like it's been too long.
Been a long time.
Yeah, it just, it, and you know, this is federal grants, but there's just been a lot of elements of trying to negotiate and get things straight and, you know, the funders have their pretty rigid uh, legal requirements that we're trying to meet, so. But, yeah, everyone's been great to work with and the attorneys, the town attorneys have been super helpful. And, um, yeah, I feel like, um, it's been, we, we've been fortunate to have, um, the people, uh, working with us that we have, so. I don't know if anyone has any questions or things that you want to ask about the project or progress or anything.
You have any questions?
Ben? Was mine is saying that now I'm going to do it in the spring and the fall, not to disrupt the summer people?
Uh, Gabe?
I didn't hear that question.
Oh.
It's just talking about the timing of the construction. I think we'd always said we didn't want to do it in July and August.
It's never, no, it was never going to be in July and August, and that's, that's across the board. Um, so it, the water project, um, if everything continues to go forward the way we're hoping, the water project would be in the spring. And if there's time to, to do drainage, um, or at the same time or start drainage at the same time, um, that would happen since that's all underground. And then, um, it would continue again after Labor Day. So I think, I think the idea was that June 15th, I believe, was the cutoff. Um, and then, um, a- after Labor Day, um, we would restart. Doesn't mean there might not be mobilization, um, but there wouldn't be ma- any major construction that would disrupt activity on Main Street. We know it's going to be a mess. There's no way to avoid that. Um, it's, it's a construction project, but we're, but we're not actively doing construction in July and August.
So does that mean the fall and the spring, if they're doing destruction on Main Street, do we have to go around the island or are you going to have a open brush?
Yeah, you won't, you won't. They'll, they'll be, they'll be passageway through.
I don't, I don't remember the sewer project, but it'd be similar to that.
That was gone, thank God during that.
Oh.
I have another question. Have we decided to take up all the handicap packing in front of Cabas or is that even going to be brought back in?
No, there is, it's accessible parking, yes. I'd have to look at the designs to tell you exactly where it is, but it is there.
Okay, because a lot of people who are handicapped are very concerned because they heard it's going to be in the parking lot and you're taking up a lot of Carver's frontage for a walkway.
You know, that's one of the reasons we had that public meeting the end of Ju- of June, so people could come and express their thoughts and concerns. And I'm sorry, but there were very few year-round residents at that meeting.
But I've also talked to Gabe and Brent through this whole project and expressed my concern. And I never saw a survey that was said that was put out to people. I never saw them.
A survey?
So any, just to clarify too, so all of the information that informed the priorities for the design came from all of the stakeholder meetings that were conducted during the master planning process. And then the design. And then the design review was done with select board and then brought out to the stakeholder list that that gets the emails every month. And that's anyone who was involved in the planning process. So folks were invited to come in, look at the different iterations of the designs. So it's, it's not that a, a design was sent to the entire community with a survey to say, what do you think of these components in this, in this plan? Um, it was that we took information based on what people said. The engineers took that information and came up with an initial iteration of the design and then continued to evolve that with feedback that that happened over the course of, I want to say it was like a year and a half that we were working on that design. It's been, it was been a, been a long time that that design has evolved, so.
And Brent and I have talked almost monthly about this. And he never took in consideration for older people or how changed the downstairs is gonna be. Now, if you move an eagle, I'm a hundred percent behind you. Want that thing back, back in life. But I'm concerned about handicap packing, handicap packing, yeah.
Well, I'll look at, Faye, I can look at the current um, design. I mean, it's in there in the room right now. You could probably look and see, especially if you're just looking at the Carver's area um, to see where those are indicated on the accessible parking. It should be indicated on the design. I don't have it up in front of me to look, but um, it is there. Um, I mean, that was a top priority of this project was accessibility. And, you know, i- i- it definitely is a, a, a problem now with the, with the sidewalks and um, entryways, as we know. So I think the engineers, you know, have put that as a top priority because that, that's what was identified as a top priority, so safety and accessibility. So if you see, if you see, uh, if you don't see it there, um, let me know and we'll try to figure out where it is.
Walkway from Cabas goes way out this way, if I'm not mistaken. But that's okay, that will be my fault because I didn't express it enough, even though I expressed it monthly to Brent. And then, and you and I have had conversations about it.
All right, well, I'll, I'll go back and look and see where, um, because I'd just like to familiarize myself with it as well.
Okay, great. Thank you, Gabe.
All right, I'm gonna sign off, thank you.
Thanks, Gabe.
Bye. Any other comments?
Everybody?
Okay, thank you.
My.
Do you want else?
Um.
Actually, we have a lot of time.
Eight, old business, uh, A cemetery policy.
Marjorie, do you have any comment on this?
Well, we've been working on it, alright, actually, it's the Cemetery Committee, I can't say. Elizabeth has done a lot of work on it. I think this is the final one that they've decided and approved.
Mm-hmm.
It comes from the Cemetery Committee. As I said, Elizabeth did a lot of research and work looking at other cemetery policies.
Um, I was glad to read number three.
Yes. I was gonna say, instead of putting it under the pair,
Mm-hmm.
Um, I've talked with Eric and we put it in under the authority.
Yep. About the private cemetery, so thank you.
Mm-hmm.
It's just easier to, it's right there.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Anybody have any more comments on that?
Just need a motion to accept it. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, make a motion that we accept the town of Isle Haven Cemetery policy, some of.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
A lot of good stuff in here.
Yes, I agree.
Good work, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
No, it really is, it's not, it means it'd be a direction.
Well, and it's clear, you know, clearly written, sentence, oops, good job. And I love eight, number eight, uses the tomb of cemetery. We know that it, we know that baby Jesus is safe in the tomb.
Yes.
Alrighty, moving on to B, harbor master boat.
So the, at the last meeting, actually, it was Tom that said that he was gonna try to get more information and talk to Hopkins Boatyard. So I'm not sure where we are with this.
Should we table it for next meeting?
I think we should wait.
Does anybody have any more? I don't have any more information, um.
I haven't seen to talk to anyone. The only other info I had on that, so I had to take that emergency management class. Remember, we talked about we have a harbor full of boats and they said, oh, no, no, can't use other people's boats.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I actually learned in that meeting, just like all the uh, public works for the county have a mutual aid agreement, you can, the, in um, the fire departments all in North County have mutual aid agreement. You can do that with a private contractor and that covers them um, for workers' comp and damage to their boat or truck or whatever have you. So we could put out and do those mutual aid agreements. You know, put a thing out, ask fishermen to volunteer or whatever. And that would kind of take care of that, that whole issue.
I mean, the issue of liability.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me.
That may be a real good option, but I think the first thing we ought to do is if, uh, what we were hearing earlier from Pete about that engine is probably okay. If it really is, we, we can, we can do that, but so that, there really is that option, plus the bigger boat option if we need it.
That, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Yep.
So do you, are you suggesting that we have individuals sign or or just be made aware or?
No, it's an official, it's a legal document.
Uh-huh.
Um, and so they have to come inside. I don't know what goes into writing it up. Um. I, I don't know if this, Mark looks into it or what. I mean, we've had a mutual aid agreement. Um, all the fire departments for a long time, like pre-mark. Um.
Are you on the?
No. Um. And like I said, all the public works departments in the county, remember when, remember when all our trucks were broke down? And I think we got a truck from Union, and they'll even can send a driver.
Right.
You can do that with a private business, same thing if you wanted. On the mainland, they have them.
So whether it's the cat.
That being said, now that I say that, can we look into doing a mutual aid agreement for those roads? Um.
Is that the same thing?
For plowing?
For plowing.
Is that the same?
Yeah.
Thing it would be useful?
Yep.
Like.
Because like I said, they, they, I know they were talking in that meeting about having them with private contractors.
I'd have to look into it. I know we used to do it, but I.
Makes sense.
Yeah, and I mean, I think we should table it. So if Tom has anything to add, he'll be able to add at the next meeting.
Yeah, I ran into the boy at two, like, when I was on the way home, I forgot to ask about what was up, going on over there.
Well, hopefully Tom will be here um, at our next meeting, so we can bring it back up for discussion. Then if you all agree, we should do that.
Yep.
Okay. Good. Um, C Advisory Board Letter.
So this was the letter that Phil Crossman sent. And um, I guess when I first got it, I was a little confused because this is not from just the Board of Selectmen, it's, it's from the Maine State Ferry Advisory Board. Um. Island Representatives. So I didn't know if he was just asking the Board of Selectmen of Isle Haven to sign on to this letter. The six islands depend on the ferry service.
I thought we would just had to give him permission to send the letter.
Yes, I thought that was what it was too.
Not that we didn't necessarily, we weren't necessarily going to sign it.
Right.
Just we had to give him the okay to send it off.
That was my take as well.
Is that what you remember? I talked with Phil about.
I thought he was just gonna send it to us to just be made aware.
Yeah.
That's what he was doing.
Right, so that's what he did. And then we had to wait until this meeting to okay it.
Basically consent to send it.
Below, please find the names of our Maine State Ferry Service Advisory Board members and those of select board members or representatives from all six islands who have all recognized the very real danger that looms and who all endorse this communication.
So he wants the?
He's looking for an endorsement of this communication to Governor Mills.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I have no reservations about, I never get a reservation. Um, I have no problem with signing it, signing it if you all think we.
I have no problem signing it, if that's what he wants us to do. And he's not here to ask.
Um, yeah, he said that he wasn't gonna, I can't remember why he couldn't be here, sorry.
That's okay.
Well. No, I think it's pretty obnoxious what he's asking for, so I, I think I'm good with it.
Yeah, means don't say anything out of the question in there.
Well, so there's nothing in there that combined us, I don't think.
So if I just have a consensus of the board to endorse Bill's letter, or do you think it needs a?
Can I see that?
I hope you have it.
Do I have it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Can we all just sign our names to a copy or, I mean?
Well, that's what I was a little confused about because this certainly, at first, we, Elizabeth and I thought, oh, he wants us to put it on our letterhead. But then after reading it, I thought, oh, no, this is from a bunch of different people, so it wouldn't be on our letterhead. So I think he's just asking for an endorsement for uh, the content of the letter.
And he just typed our names.
That was my answer.
Okay, then, yeah.
Yep.
By the name.
But. I got it, but so what does you want to do? Just say yes or no or?
I don't know.
It doesn't appear to require any signatures from us.
No.
Correct.
No, I think we just, the consensus of the board is felt to, to send this.
To send the letter, yes.
Do we need to make a motion for it or just we approve?
I have the consensus of the board to endorse the communication from the Maine State Ferry Service Advisory Board.
Mm-hmm, sounds good.
Thank you, and thank you, Phil, wherever you may be. Number nine, new business, Ambers Hill Land Survey.
So uh, as I, I sent a little memo so you could have some history. Um, the medical center and the town and the land trust have formed a Ambers Hill Collaborative to work on some improvements to uh, the park there. It's a town-owned park. Uh, the land trust funded seven thousand dollars for an initial site assessment and concept sketches. And during that process, it was determined that a survey would be necessary in order to move forward. Because we need to know where the property lines are. Um, I spoke with Jonathan Dewick, who has done some work out here of uh, Richards, Cranston and Chapman. He estimated around six thousand, but I'm just asking to appropriate up to nine because I, so we don't have to come back um, and appropriate more money. But certainly, if you don't want to appropriate that much, and it would be coming out of, I didn't put in there from the Parks Reserve, so that needs to be added to that motion, nine thousand dollars from the Parks Reserve money. So it's coming out of a reserve fund if you um, fund it.
I think that's absolutely um, a good idea to take it out of the parks, commission, reserve.
I don't think she says.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. Um, so the six thousand dollars would come completely from the town.
For the survey, yeah.
For the survey.
Yeah.
So the medical center wouldn't chip in anything because the land trust already funded seven thousand.
No, we, we're just, we're gonna take that out of the reserve.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, no. I mean, the medical center abuts the property probably the most.
But what, what interest would they really have in it other than, it's really a town?
Uh, yes, but they're going to, they're going to expand their physical therapy. They'll probably want to expand their parking.
It's a collaborative effort.
Yes.
Between the three entities.
Hmm.
And each. I mean, the, the, the playground basically is, I mean, that's mostly what.
Where most of the work will be done on that one piece of the park.
But the surveying is the whole piece, and I agree with what Wes was saying that if we're doing that and they have, they're gaining from it, they should make a contribution towards the sur- the survey at least.
No, that's, that's not, that's not what we're talking about.
That's what I'm talking about.
But they don't have to each, never mind.
I don't know what that.
I agree, I agree with Wesley also.
Can we get, can we table it and then make sure that we understand exactly what that survey is gonna be and?
The survey is gonna be of the town-owned property, just the town, just the pieces of the town-owned park.
Okay, so the parking area that they would have is not gonna be part of the survey?
No, we're just surveying our own town property lines.
That's different.
That's all. I mean, it.
But I agree with you also, that you, I think you go with six thousand, but as in surveying.
Right.
Hold on, I'm dubious that you're gonna get that for six thousand.
Right.
So I think your nine in reserve is probably not a bad thing.
Mm-hmm. Any motion?
I'm waiting for, Lad's still reading. I didn't know if he was gonna comment.
Yeah, just, no, I don't have any comment.
I mean, like Marjorie said, it's, it's the town property that's being surveyed.
No, I understand that.
So. Anybody have any questions or more concerns?
It'd been nice if they volunteered, but they didn't.
Well. When it all comes down to it, everybody is gonna be, that's why it's a collaborative. Well, everybody will be donating something or bringing something to the table. It's not just gonna be the town and land trust. And if they, if it doesn't work out with them, then that's, you know, at least we'll have our survey of our property. If we, we want to continue with our plan to update the playground, which it desperately needs.
And the medical center need more parking badly.
Well, that's entirely up to, that's another whole.
I'm saying, it's, it is a, it is a real reality, whether it's out of this or not, but it is a reality.
Mm-hmm.
So I will move to appropriate up to nine thousand dollars from the, from the, made available from the Parks Reserve for a survey of the Ambers Hill Town Park to confirm property lines and document the top op- topography, wetlands and any other key features of the property.
Motion to accept the re-transfer.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Alrighty. B, adopt general assistance ordinance appendices A to H.
So. Or so.
No, I understand what.
A motion though.
I just wanted.
No, motion, need those signatures and, um, approve. Motion, so there would be a motion to approve the new general assistance.
Appendice, appendice.
Appendices, A to H.
Then you have to sign this document.
Need a motion on this, huh?
Yes.
A motion to approve the new assistance guidelines.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? All right, municipality of. Alright, municipality of.
Oh, but it's better than mine.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can slide.
Okay, um, B is done. C, road closures, winter maintenance.
So, I don't think that orders of closing. Will we just postpone that until we revise these?
We're gonna approve the list, and then I'll just print those, and they can be signed.
Okay.
Right, we could approve the list, and then I'll just make them.
Yeah, so do you want to make a motion to approve the? Uh, so everything except Hopkins Point and Zeke's Point come, stays on?
Mm-hmm.
Motion to approve the. Um, road closure list.
Minus B and J.
Yeah, minus B and J.
Mm-hmm. So moved, second, all in favor? Thank you. Right, number ten, report of town manager.
So, as you mentioned earlier, um, Heather Sewell has been hired to assist the planning board with minutes and agendas, I'm very happy about that.
Hmm.
She couldn't really, um, start this month, but she's gonna, uh, start in October, but she has been working with Bay, and. She did the, did she do the agenda for tomorrow, and she won't be able to be there to do the minutes, but, um, anyway, so that's good news.
That is good.
What time is that meeting going on?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven. Um, so we continue to work with the Dr. Jonathan Busco and ICMS. To identify top healthcare access priorities. They're planning a community meeting in sometime in November to invite the public, uh, in the discussion about access to healthcare. Um. Oh, this island fellow, patients trainer has called me a couple of times about getting an island fellow in the next round, I guess there's an island fellow at the school right now. And it's her second year. Um, patients would like to apply for a fellow to help with a recreation program to be held in the church. Um, downstairs. What I keep, well, what I've told her is that she needs to bring a proposal to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen have to sign on to it, and there is an expense to it. The last time I knew about having a fellow was at least eight thousand dollars a year, and then you also have to find them housing, right?
I see.
Anyway, so I told patients that she should bring, you know, write up a proposal and bring it to the board, and then she would have to complete the application. For the fellow, and she was, she was concerned about, uh, what budget year it would be in. So, we're in twenty-three, twenty-four right now. So, the money would have to be in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, as I understand it, but she was gonna check on that as well. But, um, at least that's the way I see it, she would have to bring a proposal to the board. You know, so, just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Uh, the Maine Municipal Association Convention is in October, I don't know if anybody plans on going to that, uh, you've probably gotten information through email. Uh, if you've given your email to Maine Municipal. Anyway.
Nope, I don't know.
Okay.
No problem. Yeah.
They have a convention every October, it's usually around the first weekend in October. Uh, if you want to sign up for any workshops and need overnight accommodations, just let us know. Um, I have received the audited financial statements for twenty-twenty-two, and we're beginning to work on twenty-twenty-three. Uh, if anybody would like to go through the document, there'll be a test next week.
No. I'm gonna, I'm gonna cheat off Leslie's.
You're getting flunked as bad as I am.
Um. Still working with Knox County Sheriff's Office, uh, Rick Latimer and I, uh, have sent a draft document to them for review. So, that's where that stands.
How did the meeting go on that? Did they seem, they're open to suggestions, they're open to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, I think we're all on the same page, it's just a matter of. Um. You know, now it's gonna be a three-way contract with North Haven, Vile Haven, and the county, so Rick did the amendments, and we've sent that off to the sheriff's office and the county for their review.
Hmm. Did he give you any idea where they stand on their negotiations with the union?
Uh, they're fairly confident that, of course, the wages for all of the, um, sheriff's deputies will be going up.
Hmm.
As will the dispatch office, um, what those figures are, I don't know.
Yeah, but I've heard from others, just roundabout that Knox County in particular puts like ten percent below Rockland on the alley. Uh, so you know it's gonna go up at least ten.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, they're in the middle of negotiations, as I understand it. Um. I think that's all I have. Unless you have any questions for me.
Um. I do, um, so I'll move on to eleven, report of numbers, my question is about the road, um, the winter maintenance, how do we? Like, some of these roads, we shouldn't even have to worry about, like, they're, like you said at one point, they're more like driveways. How do you, how do we remove them from town? Um, ownership, or whatever.
Well, if you, if you haven't maintained a road for more than thirty years, then you can discontinue it by abandonment, which is a simpler process. But if you, um, if you've been maintaining a road, then it has to be a statutory abandonment, and that takes a year. And you, uh, and it may involve paying damages, now. You have it appraised, but it doesn't necessarily mean that there will be damages, sometimes if you make a road private, it actually increases the value of the property. It's just, you know, an appraisal or an assessment is always a matter of opinion, but we'd have to have an official appraisal, so you begin the process. Um. I believe by notifying all the property owners, but I was just, I was just reading about it, it just, it takes a long time, because there's a waiting period of a year.
That's what we talked about going with.
Sales.
Yeah, and then it has to end in a, it, it, it's a town meeting vote, because when you adopt a road, it's a town meeting vote.
Right.
And so, when you abandon a road, it's gotta be a, a town meeting vote, so it's, it, it's a long arduous process.
Right, I remember talking about this with Sailor's Way.
Right, but that, that's a request from them, right, this would be a town.
It'd be the same.
Similar thing.
If we wanted to initiate it, it would be.
That was our options with Sailor's Way was. If we just wanted to get with it, yeah.
That's why towns, I don't know, towns really need to have put a lot of thought into adopting a public way. And there are obviously a lot of roads out here that were adopted without, uh, a lot of thought, I mean, they should be up to code, so to speak, you know, maybe that's not the right language. They should be, you know, brought to a reasonable level of maintenance before you adopt it. And it, and it shouldn't be just somebody's driveway, which is basically what happened in a few cases out here. But once it's, once it's adopted at town meeting as a public way, then.
Well, cause some of these roads, I assume, went to wharfs that were used by the town for various reasons. You know, that go down to the water.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, they've probably been for years and years and years, um, but that particular one was Sailor's Way, we were questioning whether there was. The, um, property owned.
Oh, I did find out that, um, I told Niall, I told Niall that you wanted him to come in and talk to you personally, and he said that, uh, the Richards have an easement.
Okay.
To their property. I mean, I haven't seen the deed, read the deed, but that was the information that I got.
Okay. Uh, I don't have anything for, for quarter numbers, Lad?
Uh, no, just those mutual aid things that I talked about earlier, I was gonna talk about that, but I haven't, so, I don't know.
Don?
Uh, not at the moment.
Alrighty, so, I would have entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, my.
All in favor? Thank you.
An hour?
I know.
Very good.
Alright.